Is either stuck on the road coming in.
Probably in the traffic.
Yeah, the traffic and the weather. So, no roll call is needed. So, we have one item on the agenda. I'd like to remind council to refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are completed. So, we're at 3.1. Council will receive a presentation regarding industrial development policy regarding dock doors facing arterial streets. So, we have Michelle Lory, Economic Development Director, and Christopher Baker, Development Services, to present. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Christopher and I are happy to be with you this evening to provide an update and seek your input related to an industrial development issue. It's no question that industrial development is booming in the Southwest Valley, and that's for lots of reasons. One is our state's proximity to California and servicing Western markets, also a lower cost alternative to California for manufacturing. Also, our adjacency to I-10, very important issue there or a factor there in industrial development and why the Southwest Valley is booming. Just last week, two projects were announced in our part of the Greater Phoenix region. One was a manufacturer in Goodyear. The other was a distribution operation in Avondale. There are many factors as to why these location decisions are made. However, we know that cost and speed to market, in other words, timing, are two very important factors in any location decision. Any factors which may cause uncertainty in timing or in cost could cause a site to be eliminated from consideration.
Mayor, council. One of the requests that we've been receiving recently from several projects over the course of recent months is to have dock doors or the metal roll-up doors facing public streets and arterial streets as well. So, that's what we would like to talk with you about tonight. And in doing so, we're going to provide a quick update on the status of the three major corridors in which Goodyear has industrial development activity, which is Loop 303 area, the Cotton Lane MC-85 area, and the Phoenix-Goodyear Airport area. In addition, we'll be discussing what our current policy is on dock doors, and then also providing, finally, some options for the council to consider, and then hopefully receive some input from you as well tonight.
So, first, let's talk about the Loop 303. One of our premier employment corridors, the Loop 303, which spans the Loop 303 from about Thomas Road connection to Camelback Road, is the home of manufacturing and logistics, including those indicated by the numbers here. Incidentally, the shading indicates some foreign trade zone areas, magnet sites and user-driven sites, which are not germane to this discussion, but I wanted to let you know what those are. But the numbers there are indicating our three major employers there, which is Sub-Zero, which recently expanded its facility to become one of the largest manufacturing facilities in the West Valley at about 700,000 square feet. That's number 16. Dick's Sporting Goods, that's number 2. And then REI is number 5, as well as the first industrial building built on a speculative basis to the east side. We don't have that noted on that map yet, but just to the east of Loop 303, and that's 618,000 square feet. Now, this is our Cotton Lane and MC-85 corridor, which encompasses the area west of Estrella and south of Elwood. These numbers you see here actually are representing the sewer and the water lines and the capacity there. That's something that's very important to our prospects in manufacturing, and so we put those on the maps. That's not germane to this discussion, but wanted to let you know what those are. Hudamaki recently announced its location in this corridor, creating 300 jobs and $100 million in capital investment. KPS Global, a manufacturer of walk-in refrigeration units, which we'll be discussing later this evening, recently expanded into this corridor. It's also the home of large logistic operations, including Amazon and Macy's. And you'll notice right there, you've got the rail line right there, too. So, that's important in terms of that corridor, excuse me, that's important in terms of this corridor, is that rail capacity there. It's a great selling point for this area. And then the third area that we have industrial activity going on is the Phoenix-Goodyear Airport activity. And this is how we market to prospects in these three corridors to let them know that we have lots of activity going on and that there's a place for them. Our eastern boundary at Litchfield Road for the city's boundary to Estrella Parkway on the west from Van Buren to the Riverbed for the northern and southern boundaries. This includes such companies. We include Michael Lewis and Company, Michael Lewis Companies here, which is on 143rd Avenue, employs 100, and Cooks and Door, which manufactures specialty doors. And just to make a comment here, there's an area, this does not necessarily mean that these are only industrial corridors. It's just saying that these are corridors where there's industrial activity.
So, Mayor, council, would like to discuss, just real briefly present to you, is our current policy regarding dock doors facing streets. The current policy is that dock doors shall not face arterial streets. So, if you have a parcel of property that is on an arterial roadway and you wanted to have, or the project needed to have, doors facing the arterial street, then it would necessitate a rezoning application or a revision to the existing PAD or the zoning entitlement on that property, which would be a public process that would go through the Planning Commission, obviously, and then come to you all for the decision. The other policy that we have was actually changed in August of 2016, if the council may remember that, that we changed it to allow dock doors on non-arterial streets, sort of on interior roadways of industrial developments. And in those circumstances, dock doors would be able to face the street if they, there was no existing or planned residential within 500 feet of the property. The loading and delivery doors and so forth occupied a maximum of 50% of the building frontage facing this public street. The dock doors would need to be screened from public view with a fence and landscape berms up to about eight, up to eight feet. And then finally, the, there would be required to be a double row of continuous placement of 24-inch box trees along the street frontage where those doors are facing. So, just in conclusion, to wrap that up for you, we do currently not allow dock doors facing arterial streets. If you needed to have that happen for a project, it would necessitate a zoning revision.
Thank you for the presentation. I just want everybody to know that Vice Mayor Laura Tullis is on the phone. Are you there, Sheri? Hello?
Yes, I'm here. I just have your music. Don't hear the road noise.
Thank you so much. I know you've had some delay tonight, but we appreciate you phoning in. So, we're going to start the discussion. Be sure you draw my attention if there's something anywhere. You have some more?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, of course, spoke too soon.
Sorry.
It's your fault, Christopher. You kind of looked at me like I was supposed to have the question. So, we're going to continue this. Isn't it fun working with me, huh?
It is. Absolutely.
All right.
It's on our toes, Mayor.
Yes, I know. Mayor, go ahead.
For the next one?
Yes, please. So, there's been two, as we indicated, we've had a lot of interest in Goodyear recently, which is a significant blessing. We're happy to have that, obviously. Two of the major corridors where we've had these issues, questions presented to us from property owners and developers is the Phoenix-Goodyear Airport area along 143rd that Michelle alluded to, and also the Cotton Lane MC-85 area. The Phoenix-Goodyear Airport corridor areas is the region that effectively precipitated the zoning change that we did recently to allow doors facing non-arterial streets. And then the other instance here on Cotton Lane, they're working through a PAD revision process currently. So, in order to understand a little bit about what other local West Valley communities, the position that they take regarding dock doors facing streets, we, at a staff level, conducted some research just to kind of understand what other cities do or don't do. Talison, for example, their development regulations are silent on where dock doors may face. Avondale says where they are allowed, so they're not treated necessarily all the same, doors should be, should be least visible from the public right-of-way and then enclosed by a wall of at least eight feet tall. Peoria has regulations that are very similar to ours currently in terms of they shall be oriented away from arterial streets, meaning not facing arterial streets, and they shall not abut residential areas. So, that's most similar to our current standard. And then Buckeye has recently created overlays on an as-needed basis to address specific So, what I'd like to do now is just to kind of get a visual on what this really means. I mean, we're talking about it in conversation, conversation tonight and using words on a PowerPoint, but it's also very helpful to have some images just to see what this really means. So, this is, and these are all local valley images that we, that we did some research and grabbed off the, off the Internet. So, you'll notice that in this particular example, the buffer, meaning from the, from the edge of the sidewalk to the wall, this distance right here is somewhat shallow, so there's not a whole lot of depth there. There's broken landscape, so we have a vertical element here and a vertical element here, but a large area that has no vertical elements. And the wall appears to be somewhat short. So, as you can tell, in this particular instance, it doesn't do a very effective job of screening the trailers. Oh, no.
You're all good.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll get it back.
Of screening the trailers and the dock doors. Thank you, Michelle.
Sorry. You want to go to the next one?
Yes, please. This is another example. So, this, these are actually the rear ends of trailers facing the public street that have their, their trailer doors open. As you'll notice, like in the other example, there's a shh.
That's okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm trying to get to the pointer.
Let me get this off.
It must be catching from the mayor.
Yeah, there.
Okay, there you go. So, you want the pointer? So, where are you going?
Yeah, oh, perfect, yeah. So, it's.
Roll it around. Don't have to push that, but don't push that with your finger.
So, thank you.
Sorry.
So, it goes, so it goes from the, from the back, back of the sidewalk to the wall is also very shallow in this example, and there's a, there's a lot of landscaping, but it's, there's a lot of it's kind of short and not mature. So, as you can tell, it doesn't do a very effective job of screening the back of the trucks that are open to the public view.
Next.
Yes, please. In this particular example, you'll notice, I wanted to point out to you two things. One is that there's an elevation difference, so where we are on the street is higher than where the parking and the trailers are, so you'll, you have a better vantage perception into the facility itself, anyway. In this particular instance, you'll see that they used a view fence for practical purposes, but it's also for security because you'll kind of see how it's bent on the top. But that view fence obviously doesn't provide good screening for the project either. In this example, you'll notice that there is some very good wall treatment. It's matched or matching the similar elements and colors and so forth of the building that's located in the background. So, they've, they've spent effort and resources in order to not just have a blank wall there, and there is a view fence. The building is set far back from the street, from the right-of-way line, and there is also a shallow buffer here as well. In this particular instance, I wanted to just really point out that that view fence on top of the masonry wall really still allows people to see into the facility pretty, to a pretty good degree. So, if that was solid masonry as well, your perception of that entire project would be much different than it would be in this, than it is in this image. Next. And then the last image I'll leave you with is this one. So, this one has a very significant, this one has a very significant buffer from the edge of the sidewalk to the wall that you can see in the background. There is a lot of vertical landscaping with, they're not all the same species as either, either. And it, there's a combination of different low landscaping and so forth, and it really does an effective job of screening where the trailers are in the background of the facility. So, the point with these images is just, I wanted to share with you the opportu, or share with you real-world, local opportunities and examples of where things can be done, have been done to mitigate some aesthetic concerns and where things could have been a little bit better. So, we'll progress on to some options for council consideration. We have three options. The first option for your input and discussion tonight is to keep our current standards, which is that dock doors are not to face arterial streets. And so, the pro associated with that is that it's very clear. We're able to administer that on a, very clearly to our customers, and it would necessitate any zoning action. So, the other pro would be is if somebody wanted to do something different, you all as the policy group would get to make that decision as a function of a zoning change. And then the con associated with this would be that property owners could be discouraged by the delay and the uncertainty of the approval process, how long it takes. As Michelle pointed out at the very beginning, time to market is very important, and that delay of getting to market could be a disincentive of choosing Goodyear, and it may result in the city losing out on some projects.
The second, excuse me, the second option that we put together for council would be to adjust the city policy across the board to allow dock doors facing arterial streets. And the pros we put together for this would be it provides clarity and certainty for property owners and projects. It will enhance the opportunity for industrial projects with the desire for dock doors facing arterials. The con is that the result and change, there could be a result and change in visual perception of the community on arterials, so that could be a possibility for you to consider.
And then the last option that we'd like to present for you tonight is to adjust our design standards to allow dock doors to face arterial, to allow them to face arterial streets with mitigating design enhancements. The pros of this would be is, again, it would provide clarity and certainty to the development community, and it will enhance the opportunity for the city to have more industrial projects choose our city. The con would be is it may lead to some visual impacts and some, it would result in a change of some of our roadways, and it may also still result in the city losing on some industrial development prospects just because of the additional cost and so forth of the mitigating enhancements.
So, our recommendation for your discussion tonight was the number three, was to adjust the design standards to allow dock doors to face arterial streets with the mitigating enhancements. And the reason for this is the providing clarity and certainty for property owners and projects, and it will enhance our competitive position. While it still may result in being taken out of considerations for projects, we thought it was a balance with the look and feel of the community being preserved. Further applicants would have the opportunity to apply for special consideration. So, the kind of decision and discussion for you to have this evening that we'd like to have with you is that balance. How do you, do you keep that balance, and what's your thoughts on that, keeping the look and feel of the community with allowing some projects to come into the community that might otherwise be dissuaded from this uncertainty in terms of the timing or the type of standard?
Time questions, right?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Let's just go to the phone to Vice Mayor Laura Tullis. Are you still on, Vice Mayor?
I am.
We're going to give you the first to end the discussion.
I don't really have any questions at this point, but I would have to say I think three for me is the best option because it allows the flexibility.
I don't know. Can you just repeat yourself a little bit louder?
Okay, I would say I have no questions at this point, but I would be leaning towards three because it gives the most flexibility.
Yes. Gotcha. Number three. So, what you're saying is that you like the recommendation number three. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Campbell.
Well, I really don't have any objection to the doors facing streets because the cities I have lived in, that's how it's done, especially on MC-85. We have got to get that corridor developed, and if we have a large company coming in that wants to put their doors facing the railroad tracks, which also face MC-85, I have no issue with that. I want the company to come in because we want their business. I do understand the concern of making our community look pretty and nice, and I get it, but there's just certain areas of our city that I really feel we should have more flexibility for our staff to be able to negotiate with businesses that want to settle here. And I like the overlay, you know, district. I like that concept. On 143rd Avenue, what they've done with the Michael Lewis Building is just beautiful. I know we needed to do some special things because the developer was so willing to come in and put the road in and the lights in and all of the landscaping. It looks beautiful, and I think even if they put a building to the right of our police station, our library, I say to the right, I'm sorry, I'm a blonde. When you go down the street this way, it's on this side of the street.
To the west of, on the north.
Oh, yes, to the west side, west side of 143rd Avenue. I wouldn't necessarily want a business to put their dock doors facing the 911 Building and the Police Building. I would rather them face out and then have the buffer or have plants or something just because of safety purposes, and I don't know what all the plans are for 143rd Avenue, but I think we need to have a little flexibility. We do want that side of the street developed, and because we are already tenants behind it, we just need to be aware that we won't necessarily want a lot of traffic against the fence where our property starts for the 911s and the public safety building for our police department. But I think your number three is a great place to start. I think we need to be more open because I am seeing every community are getting things that we're not getting, and I'm concerned about it. They're getting businesses that we should have had, and I don't know why we're not getting them, and I don't know if our design standards are so strict or so costly that people are looking elsewhere. But whatever we can do to bring more businesses to Goodyear, I think we need to be very proactive with it, and I think we need to be more open with it. We're not changing our design guidelines for our residential areas, and we're not putting these buildings, and I don't want to say distribution centers because that's not exactly what all of them are going to be, but we're not putting them right up against our residential areas. So, I don't think we're affecting them at all, and we're keeping that beauty, but there's just certain things that we need to do. They're not necessarily industrial areas, but they're where the businesses are going, and they're, they're really our transportation corridors, and we have to protect them, and we need to get them developed. The sooner we do that, the better off our city is, I think. So, that's a lot, I'm sorry.
Councilman Vazella.
And I have a little different perspective. We're in the forever business. I really like coming down 303 and looking at REI, looking at Sub-Zero, and then looking at Dick's, okay? I'm concerned if we get too flexible, we're going to start to look like Central Phoenix when it comes to the loading docks and all facing the streets. I personally don't have a problem with number one. There's still some flexibility in number one, it's more of a time, but from my perspective, I would rather have the quality than the time because we are in the, once we build it, it's built. And once we make that decision, are we going to look like every, every other city? And currently, my understanding of Peoria is very similar to what we are right now. Is that correct?
Say that one more time.
Peoria is similar to what we are right now?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, I'm concerned with losing it all up too much where, like I say, once we build it, it's built. So, I would rather see any of those things come before us so we don't have that look and feel on the arterials. So, I tend to lean towards one.
Councilman Holman.
Excuse me. I tend to agree with Wally. I think that it, it provides more certainty to the person that's trying to locate in our area, that they're not going to invest and then get a no, which I don't think is fair. I mean, that, that good business practice would, would say to the CEO of that company, this, this is not that much better than selection number two. I, I just think that, that it still gives us some control with, with the screenings and stuff. I think that's very important, but I, I agree on selection number three.
Number three. I'm at the three. Well, Sheri, did she, she was, did she, yeah, she said number three. Okay. I agree and disagree with some of this. First of all, I want to tell you, and I don't think Wally meant this in the way that it sounded, but you're doing a good job at economic development, okay? We're getting a lot of company, and I know what she was going for, but it kind of scooted over to the other side, so I hope you don't mind.
Oh, not a bit, no.
Saying something about this, but I just want to clarify that because we have gotten some excellent companies that the other cities wanted to. The reason we got them is because of the way the department performed. It's how quickly they were to meet the needs, and, and of course, our locations are great. I mean, you can't beat 303 and I-10. Come on. That's just great. So, I like the idea of being able to increase the amount of industry that's coming to Goodyear. I think that by number three is that, that buffer, and one of the buffers you did show had an awful lot of land buffer. I can't imagine them giving up that much land. So, you know which one I'm talking about with the trees and the?
Yes, ma'am. I think that one. Yes, ma'am.
Now, that's, that's a little extreme because land is so expensive that you, normally they wouldn't give it up. But I do like the way the trees and the bushes and all of those others, I like the different levels that it shows. So, and I think part of it is what the doors look like. When you go through the areas you were talking about, you know, to the Buckeye area, not Buckeye Road and near the west of Phoenix, well, those were developed before there were any guidelines. So, there are no guidelines there. There are rail fences, there are, you know, there have loaded things just outlaying on the, on the land there. So, I can't use that as a comparison because that was done years and years and years ago. Now, we're a little bit different. We need the jobs, and I would feel very badly if, because we weren't proactive, and the problem with bringing it to council is you can't always bring it to council. Our meetings aren't every week. We're not assessable to do this vote, and so when we put things out for a vote, then it's going to be delayed. So, you say time is money? That's it. Time is money. So, I think by setting up, making sure of the type of landscaping that you use, specifically what you're going to use, the longevity of it, design of it, you know, if we go down some of our streets, I don't know what these bushes because I'm not a horticulturist, but see the three bushes there? Okay. We have hundreds of those down the streets. And now, we just put them in little barrels, and you know, we trim them out, and they need to be taken out and a tree put in here and a bush put in there. So, that's what I would not want to do. I would not want to have the developer, the developing this property, think that that's the kind of landscape we're going to be using for there because that doesn't work. We need something that is very attractive and very different levels of height. So, that's my opinion on this, and we have other council people that are not here tonight. So, that's the discussion so far. So, you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
You have the message?
Yeah, I will. I would like to add into some of the council members' conversations that, you know, we don't know that the standards that we're talking about today, that not being able to have dock doors facing arterial streets was an absolute reason that we didn't get a project. We don't know that. But we do know, too, I will say that we do have two, one that I was in a pitch on recently that when they ask you, how long does it take? Well, you know, you have to do, we'll have to do a text amendment to the joint, and they said, we're concerned that you're talking about text amendments to zoning requirements within 15 minutes of this conversation. So, that's, it's, it's something that, that happens in a, in a, in a conversation. And then there's one, another one that we know it came up in the conversation. We don't, we, we think there are other reasons, but those are stopping points. So, I just wanted to say that certainly not, you know, having that out of the discussion will, will get you further into this discussion on a project. So, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Any other questions? No? I appreciate council's comments. Joe, I appreciate your position on this. I can understand that. We may have other people on the council that are not here tonight have that opinion, so.
So, Mayor, council, thank you for the conversation and input. Very worthwhile, will help us for sure. Our next steps would be to begin doing some research and actually preparing some draft ordinance revisions that would have to go through Planning Commission and the council as well. So, you'll be seeing this topic come back up.
I'm really interested in the doors.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because if you go down there, and I drove down and looking some of the doors, and some are pretty shoddy-looking, and, and some other ones just kind of blend with the, with the walls, and they're, they're very, you know, very. the, with the walls, and they're, they're very, you know, very acceptable, that like a garage door would be in a home, you know, is acceptable. So I would appreciate that information, okay?
Thank you.
Well, thank you both for the presentation. So this, we're coming to the end of the work session, and so I'm going to adjourn it, and we can wait until 6 o'clock to start it. So this is a break, so take the time to eat, if you have a snack with you, and we have an audience tonight to go out to, go out and greet and meet and all that, okay? This meeting is adjourned.
What's at six?
Six. Same, same, same.